I'll do whatever you want me to do, five days a week, twenty hours.
Capron?
Here.
Breckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Make a motion to go into closed session as city council discusses.
He said, "Well, if I could do that, I'd do it for myself, not for you."
Because public disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation. Second?
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Capron?
Here.
Breckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Can we stand for a moment a silent prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance?
I don't know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jim Cranky and Ken Wilson, Ken Roxanne Smith. For the proclamation reads well, "August 5th through the 10th, 2018 has been designated as responsible gambling education week. And whereas problem gambling is a public health issue affecting millions of Americans of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds, problem gambling has a significant social and economic cost for individuals, families, businesses, and communities. And whereas problem gambling is treatable and treatment is effective in minimizing this harm to both individuals and society as a whole. This week showcases the ongoing partnership between Jackson Recovery Centers and the Hard Rock Hotel and Casino in Sioux City to educate their employees and customers about problem gambling. And whereas together, they invite all residents of Sioux City to participate in Responsible Education Gambling Week. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, I will behalf of the city council, hereby proclaim August 5th through the 10th, 2018 as Responsible Gaming Education Week, I said gambling, gaming, I'm sorry, in Sioux City and encourage all citizens to support the Responsible Gaming Education Week in Jackson Recovery Centers and the Hard Rock Hotel and Casino in their efforts to recognize responsible gaming. Responsible gaming is more than a pledge, it's a priority. So thank you for all you guys are doing, we appreciate it. Say a few words if you would. And if you would.
Okay, I'd just like to say on behalf of Jackson Recovery Centers that our partnership with the Hard Rock has been excellent. They are very good community partners. I just came from the casino, I wasn't gambling there, just to kind of let everybody know that it was here. But every month, we've had a monthly educational booth, and we have all kinds of conversations. And again, we're looking at the things that prevent problem gambling, like talking to people about the losses that they have in their life, maybe. Maybe the medication, the medical changes, those kind of conversations are held there. So we're very happy. Thank you very much.
Well, we're just grateful for your support and anything that we can do to provide the resources necessary to those in need. You know, we want to make sure that we're there and we just appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll commend you, I have a commendation for you or your company, whereas you are to be commended for taking the time and initiative and effort to create a beautiful business property that contributes greatly to the City of Sioux City, Iowa. And you should be proud of the work you've done and the beauty that you have created. Okay? And we want to thank you for allowing our citizens to enjoy your beautiful property and teaching by example to merit a beautification on our community. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, I will behalf of the city council, hereby commend Seaboard Triumph Foods located at 5555 Seaboard Triumph Parkway for exhibiting pride in Sioux City and being named the recipient of the Pride of Sioux City Business Beautification Award. I happened to just drive by there today, not soil already, but that's been appreciated all you're doing to make it look nice on there. Thank you. And say a few words if you would.
Well, Mayor, thank you. Speaking for the eighteen hundred employees that we have on site now, we're kind of proud of the location around town also working with us. And we had a great run here this summer. And July 4th, I think the decorations were particularly remarkable, which is what I understood part of the beautification was about. So we appreciate everything the city does for us, we appreciate being part of the community, taking our place as a growing business here in the area, and so we're happy to be here and proud of it.
Four hundred number, so good. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
David Carronfries. Dave working in the yard. We have a commendation, whereas you are to be commended for taking the time and initiative and effort to create a beautiful yard that contributes greatly to your neighborhood in the City of Sioux City, Iowa, where you should be proud of the work you've done and the beauty you have created. Whereas we thank you for allowing our citizens to enjoy your beautiful yard and teaching by example to merit a beautification in community. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, I will behalf of the city council, hereby commend David Carronfries of 4,500 Lincoln Way for exhibiting pride of ownership and being named the recipient of the Sioux City Yard of the Month Award. Thank you. Say a few words if you would.
Thank you. We appreciate the nomination that we received for Yard of the Month. We do take pride in our yard, and we receive a lot of comments from people that walk by. If everyone were to take a little bit of time, Sioux City would be a much nicer place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the consent agenda. The consent agenda today is items four. Oh, we're going to do interviews. John Myers, or Lisa, John Myers first for events facility. John, are you here? We're moving on. And Lisa, are you here?
Lila.
Lila, I'm sorry, I know it's Lila too, my goodness.
Good afternoon, Mayor Scott. You're fine. I always say, as long as you don't call me the Lila. So that would be good.
Attention today, so.
Well, good afternoon. I just want you all to know that I'm here today to apply for the events facility and tourism board. I would be honored to serve on that board. And when I say serve on that board, I'm not asking you to put my name on that board. I'm going to tell you that I assure you, I'll be there to get the work done, I'll be to the meetings, some great counterparts to work with here in Sioux City. I've applied for the boards in the previous, however, I continue to gain the knowledge that we need by visiting with our guests that enter our city from the hotel or just being out in the community at the events. So a lot of great things going on here, very excited about everything that's going on at Tyson, everything going on over at Hard Rock, down in Sioux City working with Erica Newton, a lot of great people, downtown partners, I continue to work with them as well. So I think bringing this committee together, strong people in the committee is what we need so that we can get some of the stuff done that needs to be done.
Very good.
Sounds good.
Thanks for applying.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
You would fill the hotel slot, right?
Pardon? Yes.
Yeah.
For Stony Creek. Front Stony.
Yeah, I know you do a great job there, I appreciate that.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, move ahead to consent agenda, which today. Okay. I'm going to start looking at the agenda here real fast.
Thank you.
Alex has a meeting, I'm trying to get him out of here. Strategic Plan Quarterly Update, go ahead.
Jessica Johnson, the city manager's office. And I'm going to go over a strategic plan update for quarter two of this year. And as you know, our current strategic plan has four focus areas, which are to grow Sioux City, promote Sioux City, enhance connectivity with citizens and businesses, and instill Sioux City pride. The first I'm going to talk about is grow Sioux City, which includes expanded development opportunities. There are a significant number of apartment expansion projects across Sioux City currently, including the Indian Hills, Southern Hills, and Sunny Brook areas. Last year, Sioux City saw record-breaking new housing construction, and we predict this trend to continue in 2018. Progress continues on the major road improvements in the Bridgeport industrial area to support ongoing industrial growth. Part of that growth is Seaboard Triumph Foods. They are currently up to eighteen hundred employees and plans to increase that number to twenty-four hundred. Interstate mechanical metal specialists are expanding into a new council for approval this quarter. The Hard Rock Hotel and Casino Sioux City expansion continues with a new eleven million dollar parking ramp project. The new parking ramp will provide shared parking with the Tyson Events Center. The renovation and expansion of Rockland Manufacturing is nearly complete at their downtown facility. A ribbon cutting is scheduled for August 16th. And a development agreement for a new Aldi grocery store has been approved. Construction will begin in Northern Valley later this year. In quarter two of this year, Sioux City Fire Rescue staffed and equipped our final station from emergency medical technician advanced to paramedic. This change means that every fire apparatus will have a first responding firefighter trained to the paramedic level. Since Sioux City Fire Rescue took over emergency ambulance service, call volume is up by seven point four percent and response times are down by one minute and ten seconds per call over last year. Recently, it became increasingly difficult to staff and equip both the Sulan dive team and river rescue teams, they were both volunteer organizations. It was decided to have Sioux City Fire Rescue Urban Search and Rescue Team take over those operations. So now Sioux City Fire Rescue has seventeen divers and seventeen water rescue technicians. Work will begin soon on the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar splash pad to be located just north of the current Rose Hill Park. The splash pad will include a number of fire-themed elements. Work also restarted on the West Seventh Street Reconstruction Project in late March. The second and final phase includes complete reconstruction of West Seventh Street. The landscaping has begun and decorative walls and light boxes on the bridge are now done. The next focus area is promote Sioux City, and that means creating a destination for our visitors. The courtyard by Marriott at the Convention Center held a groundbreaking ceremony in June. Construction is now underway and is scheduled to be completed in the fall of 2019. Since the switch to private management for the Orpheum Theater in Tyson Events Center, staff has been busy. A meet the team event was held in June and was a great opportunity for people in the community to meet all of the new Spectra team members. There are also a number of improvement projects underway at the Tyson Events Center, including new LED lighting in the arena and an ADA accessible ramp. June was also the first full month under the new ticketing system, Passaloon. The new system is expected to bring over forty thousand dollars in cost savings plus additional marketing opportunities. The Sioux City Art Center staff developed and implemented a one-person exhibition, Jeff Baldis' Sticks and Stones, this past quarter. The artist was awarded an Iowa Arts Council Artist Grant with the help of the Art Center. The Art Center also acted as the artistic vision and administrator for the 2018 Annual Sculpt Sulan Exhibition of Outdoor and Sculptures. The expansion of the Art Center with the new Gilchrist Center is scheduled to be completed and open in September of this year. The museum continues to fulfill its mission of providing educational opportunities for the community. The museum offered three temporary exhibits this past quarter. The museum also served a record number of grade school visitors and a wide variety of school groups last quarter and is offering many summer camps currently. We continue to expand our recreational opportunities for visitors and residents as well. The Long Lines Family Rec Center climbing wall now offers an adaptive climbing program. The program uses specially-designed equipment making climbing accessible to individuals with physical disabilities. The Clark Early Childhood Center Trail Segment from Hamilton Boulevard at Outer Drive to Perry Way opened to the public in June and now provides a safe route for residents along Country Call Boulevard and Perry Way and connects to both the Outer Drive and Floyd Trails. And the Ruth Cone Skate and Splash Presented by Mird Splash Pad at Cone Park opened to the public on May 11th. Parks and Rec offers a number of spring and summer programs. A Pirates and Princesses Pool Party was held at Riverside Pool in June. The annual Movies in the Park series at Grandview Park began in June as well, and the series continues through the summer. The Free Summer Park Program was held lead attendees with field trips throughout the city along with water safety and educational sessions. Pop-Up Park events began in June and will continue through the end of this month. The free event offers a wide variety of games and activities for families. And Free Friday Night Swims also began in June and continued through July. Free yoga classes at Chris Larson Park are being offered Saturday mornings. The event's focus area is enhance connectivity with citizens and businesses. As part of an effort to engage citizens, the Police Department initiated its first Police Department Open House in the spring. The event welcomed hundreds of visitors and was extremely positive. The Public Museum continues to serve as an important community partner for both citizens and organizations, hosting a variety of events. The Popular History at High Noon series is curated in-house and typically draws over a hundred guests each session. One extremely popular community partnership is with Downtown Live Concert Series hosted Thursday evenings on the museum lawn plaza. And every spring, the Sioux City Public Museum partners with area libraries and agencies to host events and discussions inspired by themes in the book Chosen for the One Book One Sulan program. This year's book Hidden Figures inspired events, including a visit from Dr. Ruth Jones from NASA's Marshall Space Flight Center, a night of live storytelling and a trip through Sioux City's history at the museum. This year, the Sioux City Wastewater Treatment Plant has seen a significant increase in the number of tours given to Sulan area students. Visitors are guided through the facilities to see what happens to water once it's down the drain. City Hall staff also hosted the Leeds Elementary School fourth grade class in May. Students learned the history of City Hall, the various jobs held in City Hall, the importance of recycling, and also saw a presentation from our public works staff on our city's infrastructure. City council members and city staff attended the annual Sulan Washington DC Conference last quarter. Many successful meetings with legislators took place on topics including transportation, workforce, infrastructure, and economic growth. The city successfully obtained designation of three census tracts in Sioux City as federally designated opportunity zones, which qualifies large areas of Sioux City to take advantage of this new tool for economic growth. Economic Development Staff and state representatives were able to successfully work for a one-year extension of the targeted jobs program as well, which has been very beneficial to Sioux City. Sioux City Fire Rescue has partnered with the local fire union to develop a team to provide peer support training to our department members as required. The thirteen-member peer support team identifies high-stress calls and intervenes to work with responders. To date, the peer support team has intervened and made referrals to one hundred and fourteen members, provided ten debriefings, and held five training sessions. On June 14th of this year, the city recognized one hundred and twenty-nine employees who accumulatedly served one thousand nine hundred and fifteen years for the city of Sioux City. These employees had reached a five-year increment milestone of service. During National Volunteer Week in April, the Sioux City Public Library thanked its many volunteers by placing books into its collection in their honor. Over the past fiscal year, volunteers have donated two thousand four hundred hours to the library. In 2018, Sioux City Fire Rescue EMS Division began its hands-only CPR campaign by setting up shop at the local farmer's market on Saturdays. One hundred and seventy-five people have been trained to date. Every month, the Employee Advisory Committee designates a charity for the Jeans for Worthy Causes fundraising effort. In April, May, and June, the EAC was able to raise one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars that was donated to various charities, including the Mercy Child Advocacy Center, the Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence, the Sulan Humane Society, and Gigi's Playhouse. Sioux City Housing Authority's Little Free Library recently celebrated its one-year anniversary. Over five thousand five hundred books have been donated since it began last summer. And the final focus area is instilling Sioux City pride. The Faces of Sulan Multicultural Fair was hosted at the Sioux City Convention Center in April. The annual event celebrates the diversity of our community. Over seventy local organizations hosted booths, and it was a free event open to the public. Sioux City's Cone Park was named the number one top tourist attraction for the state of Iowa by MSN in April. The Sioux City Police Department works hard to instill Sioux City pride through innovative programs that work with local youth in the Sioux City area. The Sioux City PD Youth Academy is one of those programs and offers teens the opportunity to learn more about careers in law enforcement. The spring academy class graduated in June with twenty-four participants. Sioux City's annual litter dash event was held on April 20th. Twenty-six teams participated with a total of eight hundred and twenty-three volunteers, one point possible. Sioux City was named the number one small U.S. metro area with the most Energy Star certified buildings by the EPA in 2018. Energy Star certified buildings are verified to be more energy efficient than seventy-five percent of similar buildings nationwide, and they use an average of thirty-five percent less energy than the typical building. So that's a little look on what we did last quarter. You guys have any questions?
Jessica, thank you for your hard work. I know that you put a lot of time into it, so.
Yeah, sure, thanks.
We really appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Now, I'll go to the consent agenda, which today is items four through seventeen C. You can consider all items passed unanimously unless a separate rule clause was requested by a council member. You want to speak on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda, please come to the microphone as I read that item and state your name and address, or come up under citizen concerns if it's not on the agenda. Be sure and state your name and address. Remember, we have a three-minute limit today. I'll remove the consent agenda. Second? Reading of the city council minutes of July 23rd and August 1st, 2018. Five is a motion reappointing Joan Bruin to the Transit System Advisory Board for a three-year term waiving the policy that persons shall serve no more than two consecutive terms. Six is a resolution accepting a donation from the Park and Recreation Foundation for the Cone Park Project. Seven of resolutions approving fiscal year 2019 West Seventh Street Corridor beside improvement program funding.
I just want to add something to that. I've driven past Fourth Seventh, and it's looking very, very nice. They're doing a good job, and I'm happy that we jumped on that. So I can hardly wait for it to be done. Although I do like the signals not being up right now. You get a good, you get to get right through there, right down to the other end. Anyway.
Does look nice. Eight is a resolution setting a hearing in Amendment Number One to the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area Property at nineteen hundred West Fourth Street. Nine are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving a transit joint participation agreement with the IDOT for the Public Transit Infrastructure Grant Funding for Security Cameras and Vehicle Safety Systems. B is a resolution approving an application for Continuum Care Planning Grant Project Funds. Ten are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in downtown area August 18th for the Downtown Partners and Art Affair. B is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in downtown area August 25th for the Downtown Partners Downtown Block Party. C is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area August 18th for the Historic Fourth Street Classic Car Show and Cruise Fundraiser. Eleven are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution rejecting the bid received for the Gordon Drive Signal Replacement Project and ordering the return of the bid bond. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the 2018 paving patch program. Twelve are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving the contract with Nelson Construction and Development for the Convention Center Parking Deck Project. B is a resolution approving Amendment Number Two to the Engineering Services Agreement with Beamster and Kim for the Tyson Events Center Site Repairs Project. C are resolutions approving a contract to KP Construction for the 2018 Annual Storms Inlet Rehabilitation Project. D is a resolution approving a contract for transportation services with the City of Sergeant Bluff. E is a resolution approving a sixth amendment to the solid waste collection. Agreement with Gil Halling, I think it's supposed to be, but. Yes. I don't know if these are out of order or not, but G is a resolution approving. Well, that's what I'm saying, F got mixed up then. Okay, I'll do F here. F is IEDA.
Do I have the current one?
Yeah. It's correct.
Yours is right.
F is IEDA.
Well, here's where it got messed up.
Oh, yeah. Cause then there was an enter, and it switched it there.
Okay, so I'm okay. Okay. G is a resolution awarding a consulting service agreement with Choice Health and Mercy Business Health Services to provide a wellness program for city employees. I understand our employees are comfortable, but that's a huge, huge spread on this particular item, isn't it? Are we thinking the other provider, Wellmark, can't provide this service? Isn't that the one? I'm sure it is.
It is.
Twenty, yeah, twenty-one hundred dollars difference? Twenty, twenty-one fifty? Well, but as a percentage, it's kind of dramatic.
So, we're Transhuman Resources Director. We understand that there is a price difference between the vendors that submitted proposals. We did have a committee that was made up of eight individuals to review and vote on those proposals, and Mercy overwhelmingly received the high score.
We'll never know if anybody else can do it, though, if we never give them a chance. That's what bothers me. We just... Right?
Right.
When the eight committee members came to the decision after the determination of looking at the different proposals, was there something about Mercy that stuck out a little bit more than Wellmark, or?
They had a more, a more robust platform than the other vendors. We have a current contract with them to provide a lot of services. We thought what we currently have in place would complement the wellness program very nicely. The other overwhelming reason why Mercy came out ahead was several of our participants in these, in these two contracts do not, they're not very tech savvy, so it was very important that we have a means to collect paper data. And some of the participants are the vendors that bid, were not able to collect the paper data that we require.
You hadn't until we're using.
I know. I know.
Wrong question.
How many years has Mercy had to program?
Well, the current one that we went out for bid for, this would be the first one, but the other, the share nurse, I don't know, that's been in place for a while and, right?
Very long.
And that's a separate contract.
Yes.
And how long will this be in place?
One year, with the possibility to extend, provided they meet what we're looking for.
Guarantee it. Guarantee it'll be renewed, and guaranteed Mercy will have these contracts forever. I don't know why anybody else even bids them. I'm not opposed to Mercy, but I'm opposed to closed-in contracts, no matter what you tell me, this is going to be Mercy's forever now. They have all of our stuff like this. I'm going to vote no, because I don't think it's a fair process. Don't take bids, just go negotiate. It's under twenty-five thousand dollars, it's in the discretion of the city manager, then I don't have to get upset when you don't take the low bid because you weren't serious about it anyway. I'm convinced of that, and I'm sorry, but I've seen it when I was here in the eighties, and now it continues. It's Mercy, Mercy, Mercy. It's like there's nobody else can perform this type of service to me, so.
You pull in the item.
I want to pull it for a vote, yes.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
No, nothing against Mercy either, that's not the point.
Capron?
Aye.
A is a resolution, no, B, you got me all off here, G.
H.
H.
H is a resolution approving a settlement and lease agreement with Chad and Rosanna Clan. J is a resolution approving a telecommunications facility exchange agreement with Woodbury County for the exchange of fiber optic conduit and fiber. J is a resolution.
I did have a question about I.
J is a resolution approving a contract with AG Construction for Rose Hill Alley Inlet Sidewalk and curb improvement. J is a resolution approving a contract with AG Construction for Rosehill Alley Inlet Sidewalk and curb improvement project. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a question about I. If you could, I understand getting the fiber to Dorothy Pico. I do understand that part of it, but can you talk to me a little bit more about the different parts of the agreement that we're doing with the county then out there as well?
Okay, what the part is.
I was trying to get through it, I apologize.
Glenn Sedaby, Communications Director. The partnership is between the city, the county, and as far as this agreement, the county's funding the entire build from this intersection out to Dorothy Pico, Nature Center. What the county's need is of fiber optics from this intersection down to the courthouse. The city owns the fiber between Riverside and the courthouse. So in exchange, in exchange for the use of city fiber from Riverside to downtown.
Okay. So it's a. Are we going to need that when we do Riverside Boulevard and stoplights?
Riverside Boulevard already has fiber on all the fiber, or connection.
Thank you.
And it's also partnering with the Railroad Museum. The county's giving the Railroad Museum fiber to get them a better network.
Nice.
For an easement through the railroad, so it's through the Railroad Museum, so it's a partnership between the Railroad Museum, the city and the county.
Appreciate it.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
J is a resolution approving a contract of SAK Construction for the two thousand and eighteen annual utility line project. Thirteen are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual by adding a contract specialist position in the Finance Department. B is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual by adding a system mark check position in the IT Department. Fourteen are actions authorizing issuance of checks. A is a resolution authorizing a thirty-thousand-dollar contribution to the Miracle League of Sioux City for the second annual Miracle League All-Star Celebration. B is a resolution authorizing final payment to Rasmus Mechanical with the City Hall Air Hammer Unit Replacement Project. Fifteen is purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to LB Foster C X D Buildings for three single flush restrooms in Leeds, Dale Street and Rosehill, Rosehill Splashpads, and two precast concrete restrooms for Riverside and Bacon Creek Parks. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Hopcott Construction for one restroom to be installed at Cone Park. Sixteen are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Seventeen, see the, receive a minute. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Anyone heard on any of those items? If so, please come forward now, otherwise we'll be voting. All those items, unless otherwise voted on, pass five-zero. Eighteen is a hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of the East West Alley adjacent to fifty-three oh-eight through fifty-three fourteen Morningside Avenue. The petitioner is Carol Borderstone. P&amp;Z recommends denial. I'll move first reading. And before you say anything, Susan, just for clarification, if you want to vote as the P&amp;Z did, then you will vote no, correct? If we're going to follow the P&amp;Z recommendation.
Would you vote yes to accept our recommendation, which was to deny?
To deny. You recommend denial, but I moved that item.
Okay.
That's why I want to be clear.
A yes vote is for the affirmative vote to vacate.
Right.
The portion of real estate.
Yes is to vacate, no is no.
As the P&amp;Z did. Right? P&amp;Z recommended denial, but we read them as if they passed, and so if we want to deny, we vote no as well.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Go ahead, Susan.
Susan Stewart, Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission. This was a vacation. Typically, the Planning and Zoning Commission, if there is anyone who talks about any real use of the area to be vacated for, as for transportation purposes, in other words, as part of the transportation system, our recommendation is to deny a vacation. We did have a number of people who spoke in opposition to the vacation. We have people who use it as a second way, and it's more convenient for them to use it. And we also, we ultimately did recommend denying the vacation unanimously.
Okay, anyone want to be heard? Please come forwards. State your name and address.
Hello to the council. I'm Carol Borderstone, owner of one-fourth of the block at the east end from fifty-three oh-eight to fifty-three fourteen Morningside Avenue. I want to thank the lies, how much work you actually had, and you all took time to come and visit us, and I really appreciate that. Since the zoning committee, I have spoke with a number of people, one being Mid-American, which was stated by somebody that used to work there, and he said if we got the alley, it would take Mid-American longer to repair easement, and they are totally okay with us having that. The idea of the people who were complaining that we would block off their garages, that is not true. They will have total use of their garages. We would not end that. Gil Holling also sent out several supervisors to look, and I did get a misquote. Dennis, the supervisor of our type of trash, which is commercial, said that they can back up in any side. That is incorrect unless you go with the other side of Gil that takes the residential areas. Ours came from Dennis, who does the commercial. We talked about putting our trash cans clear up to the end of the alley of my mom's former property, and we would allow our neighbors, if they didn't want to take their trash out to the street, we would let them put them in our trash cans as well. And, but I just found this out today, so I have not had time to visit with any of them about it. The alleys are wide enough for all trucks. They have all been measured. We've had everything surveyed more than one time. They see no problem with the alleys. They're clear at both ends. And I have contacted the people on both ends of the alley that would have to exit on Fourth Avenue. They said there's absolutely no problem there, and it's all been measured and surveyed, saying all that. Mr. Wildy, who owns the property right beside the vacation area, he does not want his half of the alley, and he said that he would let us have that side. And his renters also agree with that. And yes, the police have been notified by Brent of the zoning for the speeders that are coming through our alley from Olive Street to Magnolia. And I feel bad for the police department because they have so much to do anyway that they are required or asked to come there and watch for these speeders. Well, I don't stay there twenty-four-seven, but I do put in a lot of time there, and I have still seen them speeding. I have yet to see one police car there. Not to say they haven't been there, but not when I've been there. My contractors are there quite regularly before they got hurt, and they have, have seen much traffic going through there. Also, a lot more traffic.
I need you to wrap it up.
Okay, a lot more traffic since we put in for the vacation. We will not be closing the sidewalks. We will not be closing the east end of Morningside Avenue either. That is not true. And there are nine houses in the area, and only three people are voting because of their trash. And again, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming, even if I get a no. I am happy to have met all of you, and I appreciate your time immensely because you have a lot more important things to do than this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else be heard?
My name's Lauren Jady. I live at twenty thirteen South Magnolia. The reason I bought that lot there thirty-three years ago was that it was seventy-foot wide, it was a hundred-and-fifty-foot deep. I have a beautiful backyard. I have a beautiful garden. I, my grandson and I have a woodworking deal in the fall and in the winter, and I have a utility trailer that I can put in there. I got a log splitter I can pull in. If they close this alley, I would have to come in and I'd have to back out everything. And if anyone knows how hard it is to back out. That's why thirty years ago, Mrs. Headed wanted the north part of this alley closed, and we weren't against it, most of the neighbors, because we still had dual access to our backyards. Now, for thirty, after thirty years, somehow she don't have parking now after thirty years, and there's a traffic going through there. In the last two weeks, my wife and I have seen three cars go through there, not counting mine. And she's got parking for like thirty-some cars in her parking lot. And I just see no reason at all to vacate this because it does, it would do no, all it do is let neighbors have to run way or out the other way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming out, Dan, and thank the council for listening to me.
I am Sue Wright, twenty-twenty South Olive. I am against them closing the alley. You can't, I'm in the middle house on this side. It's almost impossible to back out of that alley towards Fourth Avenue because there's a forty-foot tree line, plus from that alley, almost all the way to, going down Fourth Avenue to South Olive, is nothing but trees and bushes. So you would have to have somebody out on that street stopping traffic in order for people to get through. On the north part of that south alley, there is a foam box that's out, it's almost three foot into the alley, which closes that alley part to almost thirteen feet. So, Mid-American, I have Mid-American, I have cable, I have tree surfaces that come through there every year. The only way they could, these big trucks could go through is to pull over towards the fence, which they can do, and go out that east alley. So I've lived there for thirty-three years also. I'm in the middle of the block, and it's almost impossible for me to get anybody else to get things moved into my yard. To, I can't use my entrance, excuse me, on the street side because there's railing around there, so if I need to move any large pieces of equipment or anything, I need to do that through the alley. But my main concern is, is the maintenance trucks and stuff like that need that part to get out on a safe, for their safety, so they don't smash up their trucks.
In response to the petitioner, we did have speakers who talked about their garbage cans and those kinds of things, but we did have, the prior two people who spoke to you did talk about real transportation uses of the alley, and I think that was the kind of evidence that led us to deny the vacation, not the fact that someone was going to have to pick up their garbage or.
It was just the fact that it was used.
Correct, correct. It's used as part of the transportation system.
It fails so, five-zero. Nineteen, a hearing and ordinance adopting a modified site plan to one-eleven Third Street. The petitioner is SCS Partners. P&amp;Z recommends approval with conditions. First consideration is given July twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. I'll move second reading.
Second.
Anyone to be heard?
Bob, I got one comment to make first. Explain to everybody what happened with that, what's that last?
The alleys will remain open. It failed five-zero, so the alleys will remain open. On item previous. Anyone to be heard on nineteen? I'll move second reading.
Second.
I think we did, right?
Yeah.
Mayor, neither abstain, conflict of interest. Passes four-zero to one. Mr. Moore abstains. I'd like to go ahead and wait one more week, if that's okay with the rest of you.
I would agree.
Okay. Twenty is a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell property at thirteen-hundred Irene Street. The petitioner is Joseph Johnson. I'll move that. Second. Passes five-zero. Twenty-one is a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell property at twenty-six-oh-one West Twenty-second Street. The petitioner is James and Alicia Marchberry. I'll move that. Second. Passes five-zero. Twenty-two is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for heal damaged roofs and building projects. I'll move that. Second. Passes five-zero. Twenty-three is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for the Forty-Sixth Street Bridge overlay over Floyd River Project. I'll move that. Second. Passes five-zero. Twenty-four is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for the two thousand and eighteen bridge repair projects. I'll move that. Second. Passes five-zero. Twenty-five is a resolution setting a hearing in Amendment Number One for the Combined Central. Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Plan for the Combined Central. Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area Property at five-oh-five and five-twenty-six, three and six-twenty and six-twenty-one Nebraska Street. I'll move that. Second.
Mayor and council, this item has been a request that's been made to bring it forward for council's consideration regarding the Warrior Project here in Sioux City. We'll be happy to address any specific questions that you may have, and I know the request for the developers here in the audience. As you may recall, the council had previously approved a development agreement awarding funds to this project. Additional request has been made to extend a guarantee to cover sixteen-and-a-half million dollars of historic tax credits, a bridge guarantee, until the state would award the credits to the developer. What's before you tonight for vote is the first step in amending the urban renewal plan, which would be the first, first required action in order to proceed forward with that if the council so chooses. The item schedules hearing for September tenth to bring back the amendment to the plan. At that time, if the council does schedule it for hearing, we anticipate bringing back an amendment to the original development agreement, authorizing the additional funding, as well as bringing forward our bonding hearing notices, which would be a requirement in order to finance a guarantee. Even if money isn't ever outlaid for the project, we still have to proceed forward as if it would have to, as it impacts our bonding capacity, and we have to publicly notice that and proceed through a regular bond hearing. Donna Fortner is also present to answer any additional finance questions. And as I had mentioned, I see Lou Weinberg in the back, and perhaps Roger Calderon as well, to answer questions of the council.
I have a question. Part of the discussion under this agenda item says that the developer has now requested the city consider additional support for the project in the form of historic tax credit guarantees until the state determines if these credits will be issued. When will the state make that determination?
About thirteen million is what we've been led to believe in October. It sounds like. They, no guarantee, but it scored high the last time, and their, the criteria would, you would be led to believe would score high again. And the other three-and-a-half million in March.
In March? Bob, is that what you understood in that meeting?
I know, I don't know about the March. I just know it was in the spring of nineteen.
No, I think it's March. Because I think it's quarterly.
Is there any written assurance that this will happen? I, I'll tell you, I am a tad bit nervous and concerned about this.
I, I, I'll tell you, I am a tad bit nervous and concerned about the city guaranteeing loans. Not to suggest anything will go wrong, but having, not having been involved in the civic partners issue, knowing how that turned out, would have to guarantee a loan. So I know it all works out just fine if the tax, historic tax credits occur, but that's why I ask, is there some, I know we have assurances, but does that mean it's in writing? No.
No, I have not seen anything in writing that confirms that.
Okay.
And, and in answer to your questions, Pete, which are, I mean, duly noted and they should be asked, we're, we understand based on the meetings we've had with the state, in which some of the city staff participated in, that the credits, state credits for the Warrior should be issued in October. Kind of the reason for getting through this is, all the financing is in place, except for the financing for these credits. If they had have been issued, the bank is, would have been ready to go, the bank is ready to go, they passed a resolution internally to the bank to, basically, once these credits are issued, say, I, I can't remember what the percentage is, but it's, we'll say fifteen million dollars initially for the, or, I think it's ten million maybe, for the Warrior. Then, as my understanding Nicole, with the city's liability would be reduced by that amount once they issue the credits, right?
And that's something that we need clarification on, because a letter that I had received today indicated that the guarantee would not be released until full funding of all the historical tax credits.
Yeah, and that's not what we...
Okay, all right, I may have it wrong, but anyway, by what the city's doing, it will give us a higher score the next time around in October when they look at these, and I think they rescore them, because all the financing would be in place. And we talked with this, with the director of IED and other board members, and, you know, they've given us assurances they can, but they are, they cannot legally bind going forward. So until, until October, we can't, you know, we won't have anything from Debbie Durham, basically, her department.
So this money is just basically a guarantee for you to get your money?
Right. Right.
And we'll know that in a couple, three months, and...
Well, actually, the financing, the rest, all the financing that the city goes through with this will flow into place, and the project will start. And the credits are actually set aside for the project by the state, but you cannot actually get the credits until the construction is done.
Right, okay.
But we're on it.
Right.
Unless they're approved.
But what happens if they're not approved?
Then the city is guaranteeing the sixteen and a half million dollars worth of funding to the bank if it isn't repaid.
Then we're all going to go have a meeting with Debbie Durham. Well, I mean, the, the project scored high the last time, and the financing was the issue, that the financing would basically be approved, so there isn't any reason to believe that it would score less, it should score more, which would mean it should get funded.
That's, that's what the development agreement will say.
Right.
If, if it's, if the historic tax credits are not approved, the city will make a sixty million dollar loan?
Correct.
And we'll guarantee it.
Correct, because the city would, one of the proposed documents that would be an attachment to the amended development agreement, or one of the proposed exhibits, is the guarantee form, which would obligate the city to the bank to guarantee those funds.
Okay. I would tell you, Lou, that I think it's a great project, I mentioned that to Roger this morning. I think it will just create, along with the other three reinvestment district projects, really vibrant downtown, and I think that's really what's necessary if we want to see the city continue to grow, both in population and, and retail. I, I think it's, I truly hope it happens, but I'm just a little nervous about guarantees these days, so I'll wait for the development agreement to show up on the tenth, and we'll see how things look at that point, and...
Well, I think too, the other point is, and I think it's been brought up, is that on the Reinvestment Act projects, including the Courtyard Marriott and the whole chunk properties and the Expo Center, whatever that being, relies on that thirteen-point-nine million dollars from the state.
Yes.
This project, if this doesn't go, that money won't be available, because this is part of the funding mechanism, is being driven by this state sales tax that come out of our hotel project.
Well, it'll be available, it'll just take a... Oh, you're talking about the reimbursement of the...
Marty, we didn't have enough under originally to get it out in the timeframe that was allowed, I would think, right?
In the twenty years, in the twenty years, we wouldn't capture the thirteen-point-five without Warrior.
Yeah, the reinvestment district relies on the hotel motel tax and sales tax, and considered together, the Warrior Davidson project would certainly bring in the funding that was needed in a timely fashion. If it didn't happen, I think the other hotels in the project would generate that kind of money, but on a much slower basis, and, you know, we'd have to run some calculations there to see, but, you know, it's a twenty-year period, which is a long time, but obviously, with this project happening, that period becomes much, much, probably half that time.
But originally, when you did the reinvestment district application, you believed that amount of money would be paid back based upon the hotel motel sales tax return, I don't know if it was a twenty-year period or not, I don't, I don't recall that, but we had no reason to believe that that wasn't going to happen, did we?
You had a Bomb Gar store in there, you don't have now.
Yeah.
You have a what? You had a Bomb Gar store in there that you don't have in there now, remember?
So, as it's configured today, you'd probably need another hotel to, to bring that up.
To push it over?
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Lou, you need your name and address for the clerk, please.
Louis F. Weinberg, five-oh-five His Street, Suite two-hundred, Sioux City, Iowa.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Lou.
Mayor, I need to abstain on this item, conflict of interest. I'll be right back. It passes four-zero to one, Mr. Moore abstains. Two thousand twenty-six is the fiscal year quarterly financial report, and quarter ended June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Counsel, Donna Forker, Finance Director, we are going to go over very briefly today the quarterly reports ending June thirtieth of this fiscal year. The revenue collections, the property taxes, we have a lower collection of our property taxes, but due to the large increase in our tax base, it shows that we are collecting more, but we do have more outstanding property taxes in this fiscal year, which will help next year when it, when those get collected, so that's a good thing. Franchise fees, gas and electric, we saw an increase in the collection of the gas and electric franchise fees. The casino revenue, we are doing better than we did in the previous year, there was an article in the paper that we all saw recently that shows that fact. Hotel Malta tax is down, but we know that was coming down because of the CF industry, people being gone out of the community. And then in Red Flex, we had one-point-seven million dollars worth of Red Flex this year, and that is being used for public safety, majority of that is going for the EMS division.
It's down, or it's, it's up?
It's up, it's up this year, it was down last year. We had a huge collection of delinquent Red Flex monies in the two previous years ago. The expenditures for the general fund, the largest increases you're going to see will be in personnel, and that'll be for the EMS division, plus you have all the expenses that went in startup for the EMS, but otherwise, we, we track very well on our expenses. Major revenues in sewer and water, we had rate increases of sewer of three percent and water of six-point-six-five percent, which accounts for the increase you're seeing in the revenues. Property taxes, debt service, it'd be what you're seeing here, and our levy rate changed because of balances. Sales tax, this was a year, second time in history, that we actually had to pay back on our reconciliation payment. And here again, they were estimating as if we had CF industry and all that extra revenue being in the community, and so they made an adjustment for the fiscal year coming up. And then road use tax, the percentage that we're getting per capita did growing, did go up, and in nineteen, it also goes up. Expenditures for the other funds...
With the sales tax, what would it have been in like fourteen, fifteen, like pre-CF?
We were running about thirteen million.
Around what?
Thirteen million, and we went up to over fifteen million.
What was this hearing?
We're about fourteen.
I just wondered if it was, if we were back on par, or thinking we were out where it was, and, you know, there, there was obviously the spike due to CF, I understand that. I just wondered if we're back kind of where we were seeing...
We're a little bit higher than what we previously were before CF, and we expect that'll be going up with the new shopping areas that are opening up on Lake, around Sunnybrook.
Sorry.
That's right. Expenditures for the other funds, we are seeing in the repair and improvements, that's where capital also shows up. This year, in infrastructure alone, we spent twenty-five million dollars, which is a very large sum of infrastructure, but it was programmed, so we're right on budget with that. We also, in the miscellaneous category, refunded six-point-four million dollars of bonds, which will give us about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar savings over the next three years. On department expenditures, we had a few expenditures that were over budget, but for community development, that was all grant-funded, it was grants we didn't have when we did the budget that came in new, so it wasn't in the original budget, but there was money to offset it. EMS, we spent one-point-one-six-five in expenditures, and I have a report that was in that that showed that the collection of revenue against that one-point-one-six was three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, and we're showing receivable of seven-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, but this is a cash-based expenditure number. The human resource negative was with a grant coming in, and the police department had an error in their replacement of their cameras, that should have been capital, and it was shown as operating, and we're fixing that.
So where did the first six months, where did the ambulance service, when you accrue, where did it come in after?
When we accrue revenue, we're going to, if we collect our revenues that are outstanding, we would have lost seven-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars.
Is that a full year?
That would been from November to June thirtieth, but November and December were just startup costs, which were approximately one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars.
So then we're, are you projecting a million-four it's costing now?
If we, if our trend follows, it would be a million-four, but in the budget, we were looking more around five-hundred-thousand dollars. We still think collection's going to come up, that there's still a huge delay in revenue collection.
Well, even your own insurance is not very good, I just noticed, I took an ambulance ride in April, and they finally paid it last week.
I say, it's very slow-going. I do know the fire department is doing an extremely good job of getting the reports in, so that the billing process can start, they are providing complete reports, our provider that does the billing does not have any complaints on the documentation we are providing them, but there is a very big lag between the billing and the paying.
Sounds like about ninety days, doesn't it, Donna?
At least. So I'm hoping that when I come back for first quarter reports, that we've got better collection numbers on the EMS. And then on our cash and investments, currently, we're earning about one-point-three, three percent on our funds, that's our rate, that's up from point-nine-five, nine-one percent from last fiscal year, which is up from point-five-eight the year before, so interest rates are helping, our balances are shrinking, but with the rate increase, we still are collecting more in interest income. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Donna.
Hey, Dog Park discussion, who's leading this off? Come on up. We're going to have them go first, please. We're going to have them go first, and you'll, okay?
Mayor, I guess I'll start at the request of Councilmember Capron in light of the recent death of the dog at, at the Dog Park. Councilmember Capron asked, decided to be put at the end of the agenda to discuss possible changes to the operation of the Dog Park and any related ordinances.
I'll hear from everybody, then I'll speak.
And for background, we have provided a copy of the current ordinance that pertains to Dog Parks, it's attached to the RCA, and we can provide that to anyone that has questions related to that. Additionally, we provided a little more background too, as to what some other cities are doing across the state in way of running their Dog Parks, so...
Lisa Clay, Sioux City Police Department.
Cindy Rares, Sioux City Animal Adoption and Rescue.
Caleb Christofferson, Assistant City Attorney.
I think, Cindy, do you want to just highlight what I guess prompted this, or do you want to go over the case first, or do you want, Caleb, do you want to do that?
I think Cindy is on the front line there.
Okay, I can guess, I can give you some background, basically an overview of, there was an incident that occurred at the Dog Park at, on July seventeenth, twenty eighteen.
At Bacon Creek.
At Bacon, at Bacon Creek Dog Park. We were notified of it, we responded to the calls, you can speak with the people that were involved in such an incident. After reviewing the case and interviewing several of the witnesses involved in this case, I also contacted Mr. Christofferson to discuss the details of the case with him, to make sure that the citations that I was going to issue would indeed be effective in this case, being that it did happen at the Dog Park where there is an off-leash, the dog is an off-leash park, where the dogs can come into the park and they're allowed to be off-leash, where, as you all know, there's a city leash law pertaining to dogs as well as cats, they do all have to be on a leash, except for at the Dog Park. So when the dogs were in the park and this incident occurred, I wanted to make sure that we reviewed this entire situation and made the right, right, answer in this, in this situation. I did issue two citations to the owner, one for the dog in question that did the attacking, and then I also issued another citation to the other dog that was, that was there for high-risk dog. One is going to be vicious and one is high-risk. The dog was subsequently impounded at the shelter, and the other dog has remained high-risk until the court proceedings have taken place. The owner does have the right to plead not guilty on their citations and have their, their side of this case heard as well.
I will say that in this case, we were very fortunate in that we had a witness that was not involved with either dog owner, so it was somebody that was there and had witnessed the incident. In many of the cases that we have out there, unfortunately, we don't have that luxury, and so it's, you know, maybe the dog owner's word against the other. And then Cindy tells me, although, you know, when I looked on the, we have approximately six complaints that we can definitely point that they occurred there. I think they're really tough tracking, because a lot of people will go to the hospital, make a report, and then unfortunately, then, the person writing the report writes it up at that location instead of the Dog Park. So we had to go through them individually to find at least those six, but there were six specific bites that we've had, that's just in the last, since the fiscal year began in last July, was the last fiscal year, through to date, and those had to do with, the vast majority were dog-on-dog, and, but there were a couple that where a person was bit, and in those cases, I think in both of those, it had to do with the individual tried to separate the dogs, and then the, the person got bit. In some of the cases, Cindy tells me, and, and I read, that by the time they respond out there, the dog, the offending dog is gone, just gone, the owners put them in the car, and they're gone, and we have no way of verifying who they are, or who the dog belongs to. It's very difficult to track those, and... Did you want to?
Sure. I was advised of the incident, obviously after the fact, with questions on what can we do, what should we do under the city ordinance, and whether or not certain of the rules that are already written under the ordinance, not having to do with the Dog Park, would also apply, and under the chapter you were provided with the, our, the request, do state that all of the other provisions of the dog title, Title VII of the city code, do apply, of course, other than the leash provisions under the Dog Park rules. The other rules of the Dog Park, of course, having been promulgated by either Parks and Rec or otherwise by the council, which would be in the code.
But there are rules that all dogs coming here must have a license. Well, the question... But there are rules that all dogs coming here must have a license. Well, the question is, what if somebody comes from the county that don't have to have a license? Can they not go to the Dog Park? There's a rule about that, you know, you're, they say large dogs here, small dogs over here, but then it's open in between, so the dogs, nobody's there to say that you can't go on either side, so. It's really, I think, just unfortunate. And I, and it also says, please don't bring your dog, don't allow vicious dogs to come out. And I, being a dog owner, I know, and I've heard many people saying, it's come up numerous times, they always say, my dog won't bite until it does. And sometimes dogs that aren't vicious are put in certain circumstances where they feel the need to defend themselves. So it's just an unfortunate situation.
And I think the delay was for the fact that we, I wanted to make sure that I had all the witnesses, all the information correct, and that the law did pertain to a Dog Park area, since it was an off-leash situation. So I just wanted to make sure I gathered the right information, and I talked to the appropriate people to make sure that the laws did fit the citations that I gave. And again, the dog has been impounded at the shelter waiting for trial. However, the dog has been released, but it is now outside of the city limits. And the owner, per this ordinance, does have that right to remove that animal from the city during the court proceedings, so that she can reduce the cost of the impalement.
So Cindy, the, the court proceedings, is this to euthanize the dog because it's considered vicious, or what?
No, ma'am. She has the right to plead not guilty or guilty on the citation. If she pleads guilty, she goes in, the dog is deemed vicious. It doesn't mean that the dog is automatically euthanized. It means that the dog can be taken outside of the city limits, just cannot remain in the city limits whatsoever. So it's not automatically a, you know, that something happens to this dog. And in the meantime, again, until the court proceedings, she has the right to take the dog out of the city limits, and we have verified that. The dog has been microchipped, pictures have been taken, so that we know if this dog ever does come back into the city, and the owner is well aware, that if the dog does come back into the city between this, the time of, now, between the time of the citation, that the dog would not be going back to them.
Is that for the muzzled dog, dog also, or is it just?
No, the muzzled dog is high-risk. The muzzled dogs displayed some aggressive tendencies, but did not inflict injuries on this other.
So that one can stay inside the city limits?
That one can, but there are certain restrictions that they have to meet. They have to stay inside, they have to be muzzled, they have to be in a kennel and things like that.
Also, should the dog be deemed high-risk by, by the, or vicious by the courts? The owner of the dog has a right to file an appeal with the city manager's office, and then a hearing is held, and it's deemed whether that dog, it, it may, they may decide, yes, it is vicious, or they may decide that it's high-risk, and, I mean, so there's a whole process.
What's the difference between vicious and high-risk?
Vicious is a dog that actually kills somebody, kills another dog, bites, draws blood, inflicts serious injuries. A high-risk dog chases you, and I'm afraid of it, and it's showing its teeth, and there might be tendencies there, but it's not done anything yet. So it's just basically keeping track of those dogs and making sure they're in a kennel to make sure that it doesn't go to the next step.
A vicious dog would not be allowed to stay in the city limits.
High-risk are still allowed in the city under certain circumstances with certain requirements.
Yes.
So these two citations are for two separate dogs?
Two separate dogs, yes. Because the owner had two dogs with her. Actually, there was three, but only two were involved in this incident.
Yeah, because I understood that she had three dogs, and one was her neighbor's dog that she had with her, is that true?
My understanding is there was only two dogs.
Were the dogs licensed?
One of them was, the other ones were not.
But they both had rabies. They both had their shots. Correct, that's what.
Both had rabies, but only one of the two were licensed?
There was three dogs. One of the three had a license, but the two dogs in this incident did not.
When you say, say three dogs, that's the victim dog, and then the two aggressive.
Right.
I think, Matt, you have something for us, don't you?
Pull something up here. Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. I just wanted to point out the, the Dog Park itself, it's very large. The perimeter, the fence is shown right here. Smaller area and a larger area. Both are fenced off. Both are separately gated. One thing that Rhonda had discussed was whether or not we categorize our Dog Park into small dog and large dog. I'll show another slide.
Where's the, where's the other gate?
There's the gate for the small.
Yeah.
It's shown there.
Not in the middle, though.
So you gotta go in to go in.
Yep, you gotta go in the Dog Park first.
Well, then I know, okay, so then I know where you're talking about.
You're walking in around here, and the gate is over here.
Okay, all right, so, and then, no, that's.
It's not, we, we do not have our, our areas designated at this point. There is no small dog, large dog area.
I've been there, and I.
It's all common areas.
Okay, but there, there is a gate that goes between the, between two. So, so what I suggested was, we'll have a, a big Dog Park and a small Dog Park, and, and we take the middle area, make sure that it's secured, and then have another, another gate to get in. So the little dogs don't have to go through the big Dog Park to get to the little Dog Park.
So one thing, after Rhonda suggested that, one thing we could do is gate off this area and have a separate gate in this area for the large dog. That would remain small dog, but then we have to define what's a large dog and what's a small dog. I think other communities have used thirty pounds. I talked, I spoke with Des Moines today, who's had a similar instant, instance about two years ago, and they have three Dog Parks. They do not segregate their Dog Parks. It's all one big common area. They, they had one park where they tried the small dog and large dog, and the issues they had were the users not using them correctly. So even though it said small dog, it was still being used. Some, some owners have a large dog and a small dog. They want to keep them together so they can be right next to them, so it's a difficult situation.
So the bottom line to this whole mess that we have here is that people are not being responsible. They had to be responsible for their dogs. And, and you know, if you have a, if you have two big dogs, when, when you come into the Dog Park here, you come through a gate, and then you have room, and then there's another gate that you go through. So you should have your dogs on a leash. You should have your dogs, if there's other, other dogs around, they'll come up, and they'll, they'll sniff them. Bring your dogs in and keep them on the leash for a few minutes at least. So that's how I feel, so that, you know, keep them on the leash for a little while. I took my dogs there twice last week, and I'm telling you, I got two big dogs. And I did exactly what I said, and I brought them in. My dogs are so excited to play that they, they were playing, they all played, played really well. I have a twelve-year-old lab that never runs. I couldn't even find him. He's way up on the other side of this, this big Dog Park, playing with two dogs. So, you know, they're having a great time. So you just have to be responsible. And I don't know how you can get common sense into people that, that don't have it. That's the bottom line. You know, it boggles my mind. I think that there should be a small Dog Park and a big Dog Park, and if you secure the middle there, that's gonna keep them from coming across, and if you want to take the chance and have your small dog with the big dogs, and that's your, that's your, you're taking that chance. That's, I don't know, that's.
I would also suggest that nobody uses that Dog Park unless you got a city license.
Exactly.
That's one of your perks is buying a city license that you get to use. It's just my personal opinion.
How could we police that, though, Cindy?
That's, that's, that's gonna be very difficult. You'd have to police every person that comes in and out of there. And that's gonna be very difficult to find somebody that's gonna sit there and do that. But to me, that's your perk of paying your city licenses, you know, of getting your dogs registered, so that you get to go to a beautiful park, let your dogs run and, and interact. They have to have a rabies vaccination, because if, in case they do bite another dog or another human, you've got your rabies vaccinations, and they have a city license. I can't tell you how many times we've chased down people that have gotten bit, and they take off on their cars, and we, we get involved after the fact. How are we supposed to chase down a dog bite when everybody's gone? And then half the time, they don't have a rabies shot. So, I, I mean, to me, they shouldn't get to use a park unless you have a license. That's just my opinion.
Cindy, do you have everything digitally? Like, if you had an iPad, could you look all of that up onsite there?
I don't know. That, I'm not computer savvy. That would have to be, because all the computer stuff goes through the city. Everything that's registered is downtown. We can check a license, but I don't know how that would work with an iPad.
Here's my other question. How busy is the Dog Park? Because when I, you know, I was out there twice last week. First time I was there, there were seven, eight big dogs, and, and my two dogs. The second time I went out there, there was nobody. Are there a lot of dogs? You know, I don't go in the mornings, so, I mean, how?
I guess it's probably different intervals when people work and things like that, either early in the morning or late in the afternoon. But even if you'd had a park matron or warden that was there at the exact time checking tags, in this incident, I don't think, it happened so quick that I don't even think that park matron, animal control, anybody could have been there and gotten hold of that incident, unless they would know dogs and be able to read dogs before this incident occurred, so that you could kind of read what happened, what's going on with the dogs before this happened. Again, it's so hard to say because that person would have to be there when it happened.
And that brings us back to common sense and people taking care of their dogs and being responsible dog owners. What does it take? I mean, if you think that your, you know what your dog's like when you bring it out there. You know if it's gonna be aggressive. You know, my dogs are laid back, you know, but I'm still gonna take precautions. I'm not gonna just throw them out there and throw them to the dogs. You know what I'm saying? So it's, it's about responsibility, the bottom line, really.
Matt, do you have a photo of the rules and regulations that are posted on the, at the gate?
No, those are small, but those are the rules and regulations.
Were those, was that?
They almost verbatim with, with the ordinance.
Was that before you were here?
What's that?
Was that before you were here?
Yeah, those have been placed prior to me even coming to Sioux City, and that's, that's one of the main first things that a dog owner will see as they come in.
And approved by city council, correct, the rules?
I would assume, yes.
Regulations are, okay.
And I would have to say the park was put in, not before me, but unbeknownst to me. The park was just there. Ta-da, here you go. And so I knew nothing about input, because I definitely would have given my input on some of the things that, that I would have done differently, but I, I didn't have any knowledge of that park even going in.
And Cindy, I see in the rules that Caleb provided to us that you cannot bring more than two dogs into the park. And you said, you said the one owner brought in three, had three dogs?
She had three. Yep, three.
But it says, no person shall bring more than two dogs into a Dog Park at any one time.
But there was nobody there to, to police that. There's nobody there to enforce that.
I understand.
I'm not sure that we can afford to be having somebody there every day. You know, what, what time does the Dog Park open? Or is it always open?
It opens when the park opens at seven AM, public park hours. And it, and it closes at eleven PM when the park closes.
I mean, there you go. So, you know.
Is the two-dog rule listed on the rules you had? It is?
On, on that.
On that one, it is?
On that right there, yes.
Yep, no, bring no more than two dogs per person and carry a leash for each dog at all times. It's on there.
I guess for me, I understand. I, I agree with Rhonda, and I think common sense plays a big part. I understand that. The question I would have then is, what recommendations would, whichever of the four of you would want to answer or feel that you should answer, what recommendations would you make? Should we have a small dog park and a large dog park? Should we fence off the other area there?
It's already fenced off.
I would, no, 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 fence like the other area. Like, I think Matt was talking about having the, yeah.
Right.
And having the, cutting it off at the pages, and then having the, the entrances there, so that they don't have to go through and intermingle, I guess is what I would say, but.
Leaving his way, they're gonna have to intermingle, because there's only one gate in, so you'd have to keep them leashed until you, or carry them until you got over to that other area.
This, this area right here would have to be considered a common area, and the dogs would have to remain leashed in that spot, if, if that's the way we would go. Right.
Because you all come in right back here.
Right.
Right over here.
It's only one way in.
So I guess, what recommendations does anyone have?
I do.
Cindy?
You can employ a park matron or a, or warden. I don't know what that's going to do, because like I said, they're not gonna be right there at the exact time that something might happen. However, they could check the city licenses and rabies vaccination, and deter a lot of these people that are responsible from coming in, because they, they're gonna check them right then and there. The other one is place cameras, cameras throughout the park, so that you could keep an eye as to what's going on out there. The small dog park does need some work, but that fence needs to be posted as well, not just the front one, but that little one needs to be posted as well.
Yeah, I took my little dog out there. I would have never known that.
Yeah, weight finding, Reagan?
By the bench.
Weight finding for the Dog Park?
And then the weight limit, a special permit or additional tag that they could get that would allow them to go to the park. I don't know if you, I don't know.
To that, to that point, Cindy, I mean, that's kind of where my brain was going, is I just wondered if there would be a volunteer during specific, like peak hours, there are peak hours. You don't need someone there at seven AM all the way down. But I just wondered if it was all digital and all readable on an iPad while you're out there. It's almost just like you're trying to create habits. I mean, Pete talks about that all the time with enforcement mechanisms, the ability to influence that behavior. And I wondered if you said, well, Saturdays and Sundays are when the most people are going out there. Fine, we have, we have volunteers that go out there during those peak hours. They're really passionate about animals. They just want to make sure that they're registered and that they understand all of the rules, and, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm just brainstorming as well. I just wondered if that's something.
Well, I don't know. There's a Siouxland Off-Leash Association that was a big part of forming this, this park that was out there. I don't know if they exist. I don't know if that's part, but they're, they're called SOLO or Sully, Siouxland Off-Leash Association. I don't know who they are, but maybe they have a group of volunteers that put the park together, or help put the park together to find the money. Maybe they've got volunteers that would be willing to go sit out there. I, I, I don't know. I just thought maybe that would be, you know, by, by having somebody sit out there, at least you could help. What you do is force people to be more responsible by making sure that they can't even enjoy that park unless they're, they're legal. But for animal control to sit out there, there's no way, shape, or form. We've got two people for the entire city, so you'd have to have a park matron, a warden, or, like you said, volunteers, or it's something like that.
Maybe we have volunteer trail people. I just wondered if that would, you know.
And you don't have to necessarily give them a ticket, but you could say, I'm sorry, it's part of education. I'm sorry, but it says here you have to have a license.
Here's how you license your animal. Here's where you go. I mean, that's, that's kind of where I'm thinking too, and I don't know if they're volunteers. I, you know what I mean?
It'd be more education as well as, sorry, you have to use this park, and you do understand the rules, or hand them a copy of the rules before they go in there, so that they know exactly what they're doing once they go in there. Again, maybe not, it's gonna prevent all bites, because once you deal with dogs and people, it, it still is, you're gonna have incidents happen, but it may cut down on some.
Larry, come on up here. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Unless, unless any of you, I mean, I want to hear what Matt's ideas were too. I mean, this park, it would be changing and shaping the park.
My name's Larry Ribida. I reside at forty-eight fifty-nine Meadowlock Lane, Sioux City, Iowa. Our dog Bella was killed three weeks ago tomorrow at Bacon Creek Dog Park. We're here today to ask the city council to make changes in the rules and the regulations at the Dog Park. There was an article in today's paper, and these four people over here talked about it, six dog bites in the last twelve months that they know of. But a number that isn't known of, because nobody reports it, as they said, people get in the car and leave. We've gone on and done some online research with other Iowa cities that have Dog Parks, and we'd like to just throw out some suggestions to you, because I heard some of the things that they're trying to figure out, and I think maybe I have some answers. You charge a small fee to those people that want to use the Dog Park, and what does that really get you for that small fee on a yearly basis? Is they have to register with animal control to make sure that they have all their shots and their city tags. It also gets them a swipe card, assigned to that dog or that person's dogs. And when they go in to use the Dog Park, the only way they can get into the Dog Park is to use that swipe card. That swipe card also gives them dates, times, when they came in and when they came out of that Dog Park accountability. Just last week, there was a dog that got bit. The owners exchanged the information. Dog owner that bit the other dog agreed to pay for the vet bills. Dog owner that got bit calls this person, fictitious name and number. That would eliminate that stuff. Possible video, video cameras. I know that that's very expensive and should also be looked at when this comes. You know, dogs act different around kids that they don't know. Kids don't know a lot about dogs when they're under the age of ten, and they think all their dogs are just like the dog that they got at home, and you can go jump on them and play with them, but not everybody's dog is that way.
There should definitely be an age restriction. I have been going out to the park for about three, and I had our small dog Bella. Well, these people with toddlers, they're jumping on these dogs, and, you know, it takes like five seconds for a child to be scarred for life. And I, you know, unfortunately, some people say, well, I can't take my dog out if I don't have a sitter for my child. But I look at the long range, would you rather? But I look at the long range, would you rather have your child have its face intact than not intact? A dog park should only be for dogs. Children under 10 should not be allowed in the park. Plain and simple.
Some other things that we saw were...
You gotta have your name and address too. I'm sorry, for the record.
Over here.
Just state your name and address.
My name is Susan Rubida. I live at 4859 Meadowlark Lane, Sioux City, Iowa, 51106.
Thank you. Some of the other things that, some of the other dog parks did is, didn't allow any muzzled dogs.
Absolutely. I do not think a muzzled dog belongs in a dog park. That breeds aggression with other dogs. If your dog cannot go in a dog park and has to be muzzled, according to this gal that like to bite dogs' butts, well, that breeds aggression among other dogs. And, you know, there's some dogs that just do not get along with other dogs and you as an owner should know that. There's accidents that do happen, um, you know, but a muzzled dog is not a good idea in the dog park, in my opinion.
The rules outside the dog park should be the same as inside the dog park. We feel that the dog park should be a safe place to take your dogs for exercise, play with other dogs.
Sir, I just wanted to clarify. You said the rules should be the same inside and outside and I just wanted to clarify. Are you saying that inside the dog park, they should use their leashes as well? That should be enforced?
No.
No. So, so I think you can have the leash law is, you know, not inside the dog park.
That's fine. You, you just said that you wanted them the same and I, I know they're different in that capacity, so I wanted to clarify.
That would be the, one of the changes. We feel that it's the pet owner's accountability should be held accountable for their dog and their dog's actions. It's time for the city council to make a change. We ask you guys to think about it. I heard these people talking about it and maybe a committee should be formed, those four people and maybe a couple, three, four other people that use the dog park to come back with some suggestions and ideas to present before the city council. You shouldn't have to leave the dog park holding your dead dog in your arms. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Larry. Thanks, Sue.
Is there a animal control advisory committee anymore? No? Oh, they, they eliminated that after I left. Yeah, thank you.
I am Alexis Ballantyne. I live 4401 Garrettson Avenue, Sioux City, Iowa, 51106. I am the owner of the rottweilers involved in the situation. Um, I'd just like to clarify a little bit what Cindy said. I had two licensed dogs there. One's not licensed to me. It is my friend's dog. Um, the other one I had recently got, so she wasn't yet licensed. She should have been licensed. I just didn't get the time to go down there, which is kind of irresponsible. Um, like you said about having the dog park segregated, I agree with that. I've worked with Noah's Hope. Um, a good friend of mine had lived out of the city and had quite a few dogs. She even segregated her dogs, big dog, little dog, because it doesn't even take a bite, honestly. It can be, they can be stepped on and it can cause an issue right there because big, 90 pounds versus 12 pounds is quite a big difference. Do I think dogs shouldn't be allowed to come muzzled to the dog park? No, honestly, I did it for her safety. Um, I know my dog. I know she loves to play. She loves to play and play and play, but if that dog happens to turn around and growl at her, I have no doubt in my mind she would snap back. It's, she has long legs. She's hard to catch. Like, they've been saying there can't be somebody right there every time. I may follow her around, but if a dog turns and snaps at her, I know she will snap back. Should she be there? It's a very 50/50. Yeah, if I know my dog might snap back, I shouldn't take her, but she might not, so I muzzled her. I actually was recommended by quite a few people at the dog park to muzzle her for that reason, because she loves to play. There's been days she's been going and she's fine. There's been times she'll start to get a little bit snarly, so I'll leash her and we'll leave. It's, dogs are like people. Not everybody gets along. Also, I was unaware, I also had a Chihuahua. My childhood Chihuahua always went everywhere with me and honestly, I was always worried about him getting stepped on, so usually we'd go to the side yard with my dog so I know who are careful with him and we'd go about our own thing. That's kind of all I really got for that. I mean, it's kind of a matter of opinion.
Anyone else be heard?
I hope I don't offend anybody. My name's Jan Graham, 2825 South Palmetto, Sioux City, Iowa, 51106. Big dog, little dog. We were out at the dog park. My son had a German short hair who was attacked by a Yorkshire terrier. It happens. No, no problem. But this year, my son was up flying a drone. I said, I'm going to the dog park. And he heard all of this commotion. He could have gotten it on tape, but he thought I was in the middle of it. I was just on the outside. Man and woman had a dog, small, playing around. A young girl with a medium-sized dog, her dog attacked the small dog. The man started yelling, get your dog off my dog. She did nothing, so the man grabbed the medium-sized dog, pulled it off. The girl started screaming and yelling and cussing at him. Turn my dog loose, leave my dog alone. Meanwhile, the man's wife was calling the police. The police, for some reason, got there, boom, just like that. And I said, how did you get here this quick? I mean, it wasn't a murder or anything. He was right there. He came in during the argument and he told the lady, take your dog over to the small dog park while I talk this out. While the policeman was there, the medium-sized dog attacked another dog in the small dog park. And we had told the girl, you know, the sign says, if your dog's aggressive, get out. We said, go. I don't have to go. I don't have to do what you say. So the cop was there when the dog attacked a second one. And we said, look, it's attacking another dog. And the cop was very nice, but he said, these are, um, what did he say? He said, they are not laws. They are not laws. I can't do anything about it. So he stayed for a while. The policeman left. The I left. The people with the small dog left and the dog that was aggressive was still left there. So for volunteers to go out there, I'm not going out there when you got crazy people, you know? Somebody has to be accountable. I don't know what you're gonna do. Rhonda, play racquetball. You know, I don't know what you're gonna do about it, but it's, part of it is dogs, most of it is people. Most of the problem is people. Amen. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had another comment that came to mind based on what you were saying about how you leash your dogs and leave them on for a few minutes. Um, I think that should also be something somewhat enforced. I know with no one out there, it's kind of hard to do. I know when other dogs come into the dog park, the first thing I do with my dogs is leash them or I grab hold of their collars so they can properly introduce because some dogs don't get along. That way I know I can get my dogs out of there before something happens. It's kind of an appropriate action to take. I know there's that small gated area, but a lot of dogs kind of have that ego of being behind a fence. They can yap at each other all day long and as soon as you bring them in through the fence, they're fine. Just kind of another suggestion about bringing dogs in.
Well, that's why I suggest leaving them on a leash. Bring them in, make sure they're on a leash when you get there and bring them in and introduce them to, to the dogs also. Let them sniff each other and then go from there.
Yeah, that's, that's why even dogs coming into the park, I understand dogs coming into the park should have, the owner should have them leashed, but I've always grabbed my dogs, even if they're already in the park, because usually the first thing that happens, every dog wants to greet, so they swarm. And I like for their protection, not to swarm at the same time and maybe irritate the other dog who would be fine one-on-one with another dog.
Anyone else?
I was just gonna mention that in, in talking with Des Moines, one thing that they do differently that we do not, for $20 per gallon, calendar year, it verifies that they have their license, it verifies that they have all their vaccinations. They actually wear them like a license plate, it's a little lanyard that's on their collared, must be visible at all times. It verifies that, you know, the dog does belong to a responsible owner.
Matt, I was thinking about that too, or thought maybe that would be an option or something to get in. The one worry that I have is just, too, is you just swap collars or, you know what I mean, like, oh, or, or if it was like some type of chip that you'd get in with that and I just didn't know, or if you have a card, I didn't know if people would abuse the system and let their, their in, or, oh, I forgot my card, can you let me in or...
And they, they actually have, they have a code that you actually have to punch in to enter the dog park. Uh, it changes every year, but it's again, something that can be handed off to something else, somebody else. But it's just an extra step to, to police just because supervision is so hard at these facilities.
And who knows, maybe it would reduce.
They, they sell over 2,000 permits annually and they have had incidents in the past, but they also have a dog park ambassador program that they give for a free permit if, if somebody donates 10 hours of their time to help police the dog park. Um, and, and the one thing, if you do not have a license on your lanyard for your dog, they're not permitted in the dog park. It's technically trespassing by the owners and the dog, so that way it's legally, you'd be legally responsible for leaving if you did not have, uh, those things in place. So it's something that, something that we can look into.
Good idea.
Hi, I'm Kathy Flaw and I reside at 2627 South Lakeport. And I was there the night of the incident. And Rhonda, you are exactly right. It's all about the people. Right now, you're talking about money to do this and money to do that. Why? Adults, we are...
Chain pattern.
I know, but we are all adults. And after this little incident took place, two days after, there were aggressive dogs. Well, I had no problem looking at the two owners and saying, put them on the leash and get them out of here. Because there's no reason that somebody should have to enforce something that we as adults can enforce ourself. And if they're gonna start shooting us at the dog park, we have a problem. Then it's the police department. But right now, why? And up until the beginning of this week, the separation between the large dog and the small dog was no separation. You know that. It got fixed. There was an opening this wide between the big and the small. So there was no separation at all. Anybody, big or small, could get through there. So, and most of the people with small dogs, when they walk in that dog park at night, and I'm always there at night, 7:30, quarter to 8, we're there. When they walk in with small dogs and I know whose dog is there that could be aggressive, I will go right to the fence and say, don't put it down. Take it to the top of the hill and don't bring it down here until some of these dogs leave because there's too many big ones. And yes, anything can happen. I have a very nice little dog, bigger dog. No, she wouldn't hurt a flea, but she's big and so consequently, I don't, I don't like her to, to greet the little dogs when they first come in the place. So, and, and the pit bull rule, everybody's on the pit bulls. There's one pit, one pit, full pit out there. And yes, in certain cases, he does get a little aggressive. And he's one of the men that I looked at and said, get him out of here. Get him on the leash and get him out. Animal control come out one night after this incident and said, if you see or know pit bulls are coming in here, get ahold of us and we'll come out and confiscate them. It's not the pits that, they wouldn't or not that they couldn't, but there again, as adults and dog owners, we know. We know who's walking in there who's aggressive. I know all of the ones at nighttime. If I see them, I tell them, don't put your little dogs down. And if your big dogs get aggressive, get them out of here. And they do.
I tell you what. First volunteer right here, sign her up.
Yes, and, and I think that's what should happen. And the incident that took place was absolutely devastating, not only for the little Shih Tzu, but also for the girl that had, had the other ones. If any of us that are dog owners were out there and our dog did that and instantaneously were thinking, oh my God, they're gonna euthanize that dog, that's, that's a heartbreaker for any of us that, that love animals. It's terrible. Any of you guys that own dogs? So it happened one time and, and not that, not that she didn't know they were aggressive, she did. I mean, when you bring in a muzzled dog, you know it's aggressive. And the other rot took over for the muzzled dog. If the muzzled dog couldn't get at him, the other one took over. And, and even my dog, who is loving every dog, she stayed away from that rat. So they, we knew it was. So just tell people to use a little common sense. We can't, we can't give it to them, but if we stay on them in the dog park, maybe we can help them understand a little better. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
She went on solid late board here. What is that?
You guys, I'll give it to you in a minute. Say your name.
Anyone else?
My name is Jill Coring. I live on Correctionville Road near Bacon Creek. And I want to address what possibly could help things is I think putting a large dog with other large dogs is still gonna have a problem because they're gonna attack each other. And the same thing with the small dogs. You put them with small dogs, they just said it, a medium-sized dog jumped another one twice. So there's no help there. I think there has to be an official out there from the city. Because people will say, I don't need to listen to you because you don't, you know, you try to slow people down or whatever you're doing. If you're not an official, they're not gonna listen to you. There has to be somebody from the dog pound or something out there with a badge or something to control this and set hours.
You know, it's really said that it has to come down to that. That is really crazy.
It sounds crazy.
It is.
But let me, let me say a few more things. I think the city is responsible for this. They can't avoid it. So these people, these dogs, all these incidents that are happening, it's the city's responsibility because it's on city property. They have to manage it. Now, I'm for, and I'm sorry to say it, but I want the park closed because a third of the traffic that goes past my house is going to the dog park. And those people aren't responsible. And if you look at the road, Correctionville Road or Green Avenue, it's full of potholes, et cetera, et cetera. And that's because of all this traffic.
It's the park.
To the park. They only go to the park and then they go back. They don't go past the park.
How do you know that?
I lived there.
You lived past the park or you lived before the park?
A, a third of the people at least go to the dog park, okay? And then they leave the park and go back down where they came from. I'm for them, if you got a dog, walk it where you live. Don't take it out to the park.
Yeah, but some people live in apartment complexes. I mean, you're just, it's being unreasonable.
You can walk it somewhere else, but you know, I, I understand. I just wanted to make a point. I don't wanna belittle this, keep this thing going, but I really think that something worse could happen. People have been, I've been bitten by dogs. It's not fun. And what are we gonna do? You're gonna wait till somebody gets hurt? I mean, these, these rots are big dogs. That's what they're designed to do. I'm done. Thank you.
You know, I, I want to add one more thing. This park's been open since two thousand and five, I believe. And I, I, I know a lot of things have happened, a lot of, a lot of bites and I, I understand all that. But you know, you go in there knowing, you gotta be responsible. Bottom line, you gotta be common sense. And, and you know, we don't want things to happen. That's why I'm suggesting have a small dog and have it separate.
I think you're gonna need an official out there for it to happen, for somebody to. No one's gonna listen to those people. You know, I, I tried to talk to somebody one time. They don't wanna listen to me because I'm not an official. You gotta have somebody out there who has some capability like that. Thank you.
I just forgot to say, we are not wanting to ban rottweilers. That's not our deal here. There's been a lot of rumor that we're just hate of dog. So those haters for me, that's not what I'm trying to do. And also, I have a big dog and I have a small dog. For me, it would not serve the purpose of me putting my small dog over here and going up the hill with my big dog. Nobody has ever really put the little, everybody just uses the same area. Nobody says the little dogs go here and everybody uses the same area. So yeah, that might be an idea for, to keep the small dogs over there. For me, having a big dog and a small dog, that would not work. Because I want to see both of my dogs at all times. So, but for, I, it's a good idea. Of course, I don't have the small dog anymore, so I guess I don't have to worry about that now, but.
The ultimate thing happened to you though, Sue, that's the thing. You know, you're, you're talking about how big dogs and little dogs get along. And look what happened. I mean, you're, you're the foster child of, you know, your little dog getting killed.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, our dogs are our children. And, you know, I mean, not everybody thinks that way, but I do. And, you know, I, it would probably be a good idea to separate the two areas.
I mean, if your dog was separated from the big dogs, it wouldn't have happened, right? I mean, that's how you, that's how you avoid.
She has one of each and she doesn't want to separate.
I understand that.
I think we have to look at all.
My, my little dog would not have stayed in that. My little dog was, didn't go out there to play. She was nine years old. She never played at all. She liked to be with me. She liked being outside. She loved the car ride out there. So for her, where my big dog, he was out there playing and having fun. So she was just with me and I would sit and she would sit on my lap. She liked being outside. So for her, the dog park was not necessarily a place for her to play. But she pretty much ignored dogs. She did, she wanted people. She was not a dog's dog. She loved people as opposed to dogs. She could care less about other dogs. And she wasn't one of these little nippy dogs either. She pretty much minded her own business and did her own thing, so. But I do think it's a good idea. It's too late for me now, but I've, and for me, I would just take my big dog out to get his exercise and just leave her at home. So that's what I should have done. Or it's a good idea to separate the two. Thank you.
Well, let this person speak. You spoke a couple.
I'm Tanya Baum, and I live at forty-three thirty, forty-three twenty-five Orleans Avenue, Sioux City, Iowa. The reason that I came tonight was because when I read the article, there was a few options for solutions what we could possibly do, and one of them was to eliminate the dog park. And I came to, to say that, that that absolutely can't be the solution, that we have to do better than that. The dog park gives us an opportunity to exercise our dogs properly the way that dogs need to be exercised in a safe, relatively safe environment. They can be off-leash, they can be free to run. Not all of us have the opportunity to own acreages and farms to give dogs that opportunity. Not only does it exercise our dogs, but it gives us a sense of community. I raised my kids at that dog park along with my dogs. They ran with their dogs. They were allowed to let their dogs chase them and play ball with them and what, that's what a dog is supposed to be. So we have to do much better than, much better than taking it down. I apologize, sir, about the traffic on your road, but it's also a kid park and a place for families to fish. And you're gonna get traffic. It's a place for a community to congregate. That's what Bacon Creek is for. We build community. All of these people in the room want a solution. We are a community of friends. I bet we could name each other by, you know, first names and tell you what kind of dog they had. So this is more than just a place to, to go. The other thing is that this was not, as unfortunate was, this was not a big dog, small dog issue. I think we're getting a little narrow focused. This was an aggressive dog issue. It was unprovoked and it was attacked. So, so we keep talking, big dog, little dog. We have all dogs. We're not discriminatory. We let everybody in if they're friendly. We will police ourselves. We are a community. Give us the authority to kick people out when they're not supposed to be there and back us up when we do it. We'll control on our speed dial and they'll come quick. I'm not trying to get in jail, I'm not trying to get in a fight with anyone, but I want someone to have my back when I volunteer out there and when I protect my dogs. As far as the, the whole recommendation about the children, let parents, let parents parent their own children, keep the city out of it. There's a lot of times when we went out there and it was early morning and there was no one else out there and we got to have our kids play with their dogs the way they're supposed to. So I agree that you enter at your own risk, you bring your kids at your own risk, you bring your own dogs at your own risk, and we all know this. But only limit and govern what you absolutely need to limit and govern. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point.
Um, addressing the little dog versus small dogs, if you have both dogs, I know I got a lot of grief for taking three dogs, which I now know that's the rule. I honestly, I've read the rules. I guess I stopped at the aggressive dogs and licensed dogs because I'm like, that, none of that applies to my dogs and then continued down to two-dog limit rule. If you have a small dog and a big dog, if they do end up making the change where it's required they're separate, I don't think you should be allowed to bring both because you should be on the side of the fence that you, your dog is at. If you can't be in both places at once, both dogs shouldn't be there. Opposed to yippy dogs, I know this isn't a court case, so my side of the story really shouldn't be there. But if a dog doesn't like other dogs, isn't there to play, it honestly shouldn't have been there. If it just wants to sit on your lap, go sit at your lap at home, that kind of thing. There was a time my dog went up to sniff the other dog and it did yip at it and I just kinda shoved my dog away. Hey, go away, doesn't wanna be messed with, fair enough. Dogs don't like all dogs. Then we just kinda meandered our way away because wanna be left alone. But I do strongly believe that if you have both, one of each, if it does end up separated, you can't have your one dog on one side and another dog on the other unless you have two people that are responsible for that dog. Because who's to say? I've never been worried about my dogs going after other dogs. I've been worried about other dogs going after them. I feel I can defend my dog and take another dog off of my dog. But if you're not on that side to defend your dog or if your dog goes after another dog because you have one of each on each side, you can't necessarily protect your dogs from others or protect other dogs or also see a sign of aggression from your own dog to get it to leave.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Council, there's a lot of ideas thrown out here tonight. I don't think we're gonna solve this issue tonight. The Parks and Recreation Department's willing to lead a, put together a committee to examine this issue and come back with recommendations, so.
We already got a couple volunteers.
Yes, we do.
We're getting there.
So good.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to council concerns and Donna Thiele.
And what?
Donna Thiele wants to talk about right-of-way alley fencing.
Citizen.
Citizen concerns, I said that.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Donna lives in.
Donna Thiele.
Concordia Drive.
Sorry.
Hey, go ahead.
Donna Thiele, T-H-I-E-L-E, thirty-four, thirty-one Concordia Drive. The issue is encroaching fences within our alley. Right-of-way, we have our garage as well as three other garages have alley-only access. We're supposed to have a sixteen-foot alley from wood fence to wood fence. Now it is only twelve feet. September of twenty sixteen, my husband and I came home from South Dakota to find a wood fence at thirty-four, forty-one Concordia Drive along the alley. There was a chain link. The wood fence appeared to be further out. I've gone back and forth with different departments of the city, numerous people that I have talked to. The issue is still at hand. It hasn't been solved. And I have a signed petition I'd like to give to the city clerk as well as addresses with alley-only, copy of encro. But it was permitted to put this fence up. The end of the fence on the west side is three foot into the alley. At least three foot into the alley. May I present this to you? And I also have documents I'd like to give to the council members.
Thank you.
Yeah, there you go. Thanks.
Thank you, Dana.
You're welcome.
All right, we will have the legal department look into this and work with you, okay?
Um, I also have some photos. I'd really like a few minutes of time, Mayor Scott, if I can have it.
I'll do you this stuff.
Okay. I have photos. We have, it's not only the fences, we have, not year-round behind the garage. We have vines that grow off the fence on the, the west side of the alley that grow off, a foot, two feet off of that large vehicle. I got my vehicles out from my garage that rose out of them.
Which, okay. Is it, this is yours or you're on this side?
No, this is the guy that has stuff behind the garage.
Okay.
Continue. No room to blow this cement, I mean, no. And these are the four garage. Alley-only access to garages.
Temporary permit says that a fence has to be removed in two days. That's what I was told by three different people, I believe, that I talked to. Permanent encroachment in an alley right-of-way. Per the state of Iowa, the alley has to be vacated before there is a permanent encroachment. One thing I had asked several people, why I didn't get a letter? Why we didn't get a letter when in nineteen ninety-one, when there was a three-inch encroachment with the garage, a garage? Why didn't we get a letter when there's a three-foot encroachment? One said they didn't send letters for fences. The other said that we should have received a letter because it was an encroachment in an alley right-of-way.
This is the one, this is the one we've talked about, isn't it?
Yes. And it's not, okay, so we have twelve feet from wood fence to wood fence, east to west. Where the panel that comes out from the garage that had the easement in nineteen ninety-one, the three-inch easement, it's approximately three feet, that panel, and then it goes back. So twelve plus three is fifteen. So we're assuming that there's a couple fences on the west side of the alley that are also encroaching. And we would like them put back on their property lines like they should be.
We've looked at this, haven't we? Jeff?
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. I've met with Donna and, and I think most recently Donna and I met with Councilman Dan Moore to discuss these issues. As a result of that meeting, we'd asked Donna to bring in a petition, speak with her neighbors to determine what level of concern we have here in the neighborhood with the reduced width of the alley. Donna is correct, there is a fence located at thirty-four, forty-one Concordia that does encroach into public right-of-way. There was a permit issued, I believe, Donna, you may have to help me out, in what year?
Well, Glenn Ellis told me it was two months prior to me first, when I first talked to him, November twenty-first of twenty sixteen, which would make it September. Permit wasn't taken out, applied for and, and approved until in October, which makes no sense to me. I've been told a temporary permit, however, on the application permit, it shows a permanent permit. You can't have a permanent encroachment without. We have to have access to our four garages. Everybody else along there has off-street access to their garages except for the four of us.
So as Donna mentioned, there was a permit issued, it sounds like back in two thousand and sixteen, at that time by the city engineer Glenn Ellis to install a fence. My understanding, and I was not involved in that, that period of the construction of the fence, my understanding was there was a chain-link fence prior to the request for the encroachment permit. They were caught putting up a wood fence, which a fence does not require a permit to be constructed. But in this case, it encroached to the alley, so they were told they had to come in, apply for an encroachment permit to put up the, the wood fence in replacement of the chain-link fence. And at that time, the city engineer approved that permit. My understanding is he based his decision on the fact that they were simply replacing a chain-link fence with a wood privacy fence. Therefore, he approved it at that time. When Councilman Dan Moore and I met with Donna, we suggested to get with the other property owners in the alley who have access off the alley, come forward with a petition to, to show the concerns of the reduced alley. And that would prompt us to have a survey done to determine the exact location of that sixteen-foot right-of-way and what encroachments we have both on each side of the alley. Because it sounds like you're, you're only coming up with fifteen feet, even with the other fences on the other side of the property. So we suggested Donna to take this step and so we can move forward with getting a survey. The junk concerns, we have addressed those on numerous occasions. Our code enforcement officers have been successful at times with removing that junk. And I don't know what, what photos you have in front of you, but the most recent photos that we have had, we've had two code enforcement officers out there. And also the vines were addressed. We sent out letters and all those vines have been cut and discarded. And that was the last time Donna and Dan and I met. All those actions had already taken place.
No, they're not. The vines are back, the junk's behind the garage. I've got July of twenty eighteen on that, one with the junk.
We can.
Pictures are over here.
If I can have the most recent photos, we can send both code enforcement officers back out there to address those two issues because we've done it in the past.
I'd really like this fence thing resolved before winter. My husband has cleared the alley. Snowblow it. If it's too heavy, we have to get out there and hand shovel it. This winter, we, he cleared it with a seven-and-a-half inch snowfall. I helped him, I had to hand shovel part of it. It was a wet, heavy snow. He got done and he said, what are we gonna do if we get our ten- or twelve-inch snowfall? We have no place to put that snow. Because we're the first ones that need access to the alley out, I think is why we've always cleared it. You know, it's just how it's been. And we've lived there forty-three years.
Are you gonna get a survey done then?
We can have our survey crew, and if their time doesn't allow, we'll have to hire that to be done.
Okay, well, let's get that done. Yeah. You've done, you've done what was asked of you. You've been extremely patient. Mr. Hanson's been very helpful.
Yes, and I appreciate that too.
Yeah, so I appreciate your patience, but this will jump-start it and we'll, we'll keep moving forward with it.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
You're welcome.
Anyone else to be heard? Pete?
Uh, two quick things. I just wanted to recognize the Sioux City Police Department for their reaccreditation efforts with Kalia, the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. They, as I think all council knows, the department achieved the gold standards with excellence. It only goes up to one percent of the agencies in the United States. And this is Sioux City Police Department's eighth reaccreditation. They started in nineteen ninety-five, so they've been doing an outstanding job. And I just wanted them to know that we appreciate all the effort that they have.
But for the captain when they started all that.
I, I, his name was Pete something.
I think I know that guy. I think it was Mr. Pete.
Just take more a little bit.
I can't remember.
There you go.
Hey, Pete, way to go. Good job.
Yeah, good job.
Hey, and I had another thing that apparently Jill, I think Jill stuck it up. The, tomorrow night is National Night Out.
Yeah. Where are you guys gonna go?
Six to eight. Well, I went.
Eight locations.
I went to the east and, I went to the east and Morningside last year, so I'd like to try north and west.
I'll go to whatever's left, but I really wanted to do the water fight with you last year.
Oh, Lord.
At Eighteenth.
Yes.
I can do Leeds and Lee Ferickson if you want. I'm gonna be doing the Acme comic book in between, so if you want me to do.
You're gonna be doing that tomorrow, that's tomorrow evening.
Where is that?
Eight, seven, yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's at five o'clock. I'm good. Okay, I'm good.
Because this is six to eight, isn't it?
Yeah. I thought this was seven. So where do you, where do you want me to go? I'll do Leeds.
Well, Pete, what was yours?
And Lee.
I'd say, I'd like to go, I'd probably like to hit Eighteenth Street and Center Street. And I think I got to, I went to Riverside last year and then I ended up out in Greenville and Latham Park. So I thought I'd hit.
I appreciate your enthusiasm, but for two hours, you know, if you're gonna spend any time at the locations, I don't know if you can, maybe.
You gotta go.
Maybe you can hit them all, but I just.
You can't talk like you.
You can't hit them all. You can't hit them all.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm saying, I, I hit...
Which one are you gonna take, Pete? Eighteenth?
Yeah, I was thinking Eighteenth and Nebraska and Cook Park, because I haven't been there for a couple of years.
Well, that's good. I'll do Riverside, and then I think there's a church over Morningside, isn't there?
St. Mark's.
Yeah, okay.
Be careful.
What? Think I'll go up and fire, or what?
Rhonda, you've got, or Dan, that leaves you.
What's the address of St. Mark's?
Yeah, you can do Grandma Moose, Dan.
Grandma Moose?
Okay. And then you can do South Cedar, Latham Park. That's a real nice one.
Okay. Latham Park.
Yeah, they, they had great food out there.
Well, great food out there.
If I'm not busy, I might send them back.
And then Alex can...
He can do whatever he wants.
What, but Pete, if you could get to Eighteenth Street, where, I can't, I'm not seeing it, Rhonda?
Well, I think...
The Mary King, Eighteenth and Nebraska.
Eighteenth and Nebraska.
Mary's doing Lee.
Oh, he's doing Lee?
Yeah.
I'll stop by there, too, Pete, 'cause I can do that right after.
Well, if you could do that as your last one.
Lee Ferickson?
No.
No. Eighteenth and Nebraska.
Eighteenth?
You, for Christ.
We could do, we could do the water fight.
Well, I'm not gonna miss that, so I'll put that on my list, too.
I'm gonna leave there right, I'll go early. I'll go right after I do the Acme ham.
What time to start? Did you say six or five?
Six o'clock.
Six?
I gotta do this comic book thing at five.
Okay.
What, are they making a comic book?
They got a...
Yeah, about the council.
No, he's got some Rick and Morty Day or something.
Rick and Morty.
Okay, whatever it is.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
You're still smiling. Kansas City.
Anything else, Pete?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Well, it's a good, well, I was gonna mention, are we keeping you up?
A little bit, but don't worry about it.
I was just gonna mention National Night Out, but we already covered that. And then, of course, you know, Ellie said to leave early, so he gave me this big list of stuff.
Mm-hmm. Well, save it for next week, so roll on.
Bob, I'm not done. I was gonna say, I ditched it. I'm done.
Because I gotta sit seven o'clock.
I could go to work, too. Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Nothing further, Mayor?
Move adjourn.
Second. I got you. That's helpful.
Aye.
More?
He's in shock.
Scott?
Aye.
Water, Cape Town.
Yep.
Thank you, everybody. And thank you for the Yamanashi City event that we had.
Oh, I forgot.